I know what's going on. They know what's going on.
Call the city of Oglesby, council meeting to order.
Ogilvy, absent. Cullen?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Udis?
Here.
Ravara?
Here.
Mr. Ogilvy is hung up in an airport.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion and second to approve the minutes of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Public comments on agenda items only.
How it is.
Greg Sandwold. I see you're gonna approve bids, or a bid, for the tree removal out at the new wastewater treatment plant. I'd like yous to try to ask them to save appropriate trees and cut them to link to a circle around the Resner parking lot in a U shape that our departments would put in, sunk into the gravel so they don't roll around, and put a swale towards Walnut Street and cut the curb so the public can use it this winter. That's it.
Thank you. At this time.
Mr. Kleinfeldter would like to address the council down with regard to item number twelve.
Good evening. Good evening. No problem. Thank you. My name's Cody Kleinfeldter. I'm an attorney with Herbal Shimer Law Office in LaSalle, and I'm here representing my client, Mr. Jay Patel. He and his wife, Mrs. Gita Patel, have submitted a liquor license application for the council's consideration with regard to a potential business they're hoping to open here in Oglesby located at two-ten North Columbia Drive. Here in Oglesby, that location was approximately across the street from Moore's Rupier Stand. It's a vacant building now. It's been vacant, I believe, for about a year. Mr. and Mrs. Patel are under contract to purchase that building. They're in their due diligence period currently. The application is a necessary part of their desired use, which is to open a liquor store there on Columbia Drive. Mr. and Mrs. Patel have operated the three fifty-one mini mart in LaSalle. If you're familiar with that, right on three fifty-one Juliet Street, three fifty-one, yeah, three fifty-one Juliet Street Roosevelt Road is a cross street there that they've operated for seven years or so. If you've been in there, you know it's a nice clean store, nice variety of beer, wine, liquor, and they hope to do the same here in Oglesby. Be a nice addition to Oglesby and that it's hopeful to be successful for an operating business there, take up a formerly vacant building. Some of the added benefits too are folks not having to travel, which some of the council have noted. When you've got a store in town that has those specialty items, not having to leave, and if the residents aren't having to leave, or you're drawing people, oh, we know that place has that coming in. Hopefully, they stay, stop at the restaurant, some of the other amenities or activities in town there. Mr. Patel, as I mentioned, is here and is happy to answer any questions the council might have, but the application is pending before the council, and we'd ask that the council make a decision on that tonight because the due diligence period has been extended while it's been under council consideration. But unfortunately, we are somewhat at the end of the line in needing a decision to determine whether Mr. and Mrs. Patel will move forward in acquiring that business. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion and second to approve bills as presented for payment.
Make a motion to approve the bills presented for payment.
Second.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Presentation of audit and financial overview from Hopkins and Associates CPAs.
Amy gave you all a packet in your board handout that I'm basically just gonna go through. First off, I'd like to thank Amy, Patty, and Aaron for all their help during the audit. They always get back to me very quickly, and I do very much so appreciate that. In your packet that you have, I've enclosed two spreadsheets with this letter. The first is a comparison of the cash position as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, and twenty eighteen. The second is a comparison of fund income statements for the fiscal year ended twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Cash comparison highlights the overall cash position of the city of Oglesby increased by three million fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven from April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one to April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. From April thirtieth of twenty eighteen to April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, the total cash balance of the city has increased by over six point two million, and the line of credit has been paid down to zero for the last two years. The cash balance in unrestricted funds, which is the general electric, water, sewer, and sanitation, increased by two million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-four during the year and ended up at seven million three ninety-hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four as of April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. At the end of twenty twenty-two, the inter-fund transfers were made to get fund balances and all funds to be positive. Cash in the restricted funds increased by three hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty during the year end, April thirtieth. The overall for the year ended, the city had a net profit of three million two hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and thirty-four compared to a net profit of... Sorry. Don't mind my spreadsheet. So this year it was three million two hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-six, and last year it was three million two hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and thirty-four. The general fund had an operating income of three hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six prior to considering transfers. This increase compared to last year, which you had net operating loss of one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-two. Net transfers in from other funds was three hundred and thirty-six thousand, which resulted in the general fund with a profit of seven hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-six. Revenue for this year was three million four hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and nine, and last year it was two million nine hundred and nineteen thousand seventy-two. There was a few items due to the increase in revenues. One was replacement tax. That went up around like forty thousand. I know most of my schools in the area, those also went up, and they're projected to be high again next year, so I'm guessing yours is also going to be high again this year. Increase in sales tax of a hundred and sixty-five thousand and the local sales tax of seventy-nine thousand. The increase in the city utility tax of fifty thousand and then the Ameren utility tax of twenty-six thousand. The increase in video gaming tax, which we did expect to go up because last year there was a few months where it was closed. There was a decrease in building permits this year. That was, last year you had that GTI expansion, which was seventy-four thousand. Increase in federal grants of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty due to the American Rescue Grant. This year, there was an increase in the IVCC overtime. Last year, they did not. They were shut down for part of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, so that was down last year. Other accounts, there was very little change. Local and state tax money remained consistent with the prior year as well as local fees, fines, and charges for services. The TIF fund had an operating income of one million one hundred and thirty-six thousand, which was an increase compared to last fiscal year of an operating loss of one thousand one hundred and two. This year, there was a decrease in street maintenance and engineering fees. There was also a decrease in the reimbursement to Oglesby Grade School. That was just a timing thing because last year there was an extra payment from the prior fiscal year, so that'll be back to normal next year. Last fiscal year, the city had numerous improvements, and then there was also a payment for the fire truck last fiscal year, which was paid out at the general fund this fiscal year. The electric fund had an operating profit of one million three hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and ten compared to last year of one million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand six nineteen. Last year, you had that GTI expansion, which required a large amount of new electricity. It was like seventy-five thousand for a month at the beginning, and then the power adjustment also decreased this year. And then you received that reimbursement from GTI this year of two thirty-six, whereas last year it was six seventy-eight. The water and sewer front user fees remained pretty consistent compared to last year. The other fund revenues, operating income was down this year compared to last year, and that was due to your TIF Fund Five closing out, and you're not receiving that property tax money. Overall, the city had a good financial year and has gotten much better over the past few years. Unrestricted cash continues to grow, and the city is slowly rebuilding the reserves necessary to replace infrastructure in the future. At the end of the fiscal year, the city had an outstanding long-term liability of one million eight hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty. Any questions?
I do have one. You might not be able to answer it right here, but one of the things I was trying to listen to when you talked about all the increases for the different funds was water and sewer. I know it's a big thing taxpayers are always talking to me about because we've increased our water and sewer fees to expand, to expect for this upcoming new wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
Obviously, a lot of that multimillion is from that. What I'd like to know is how much of the increases that we're getting are not related to that? Because I'm gonna use that as part of my argument probably again later this year. I might probably fail again when it comes to trying not to raise the property taxes, but I'd like to find out how much of our revenues are increasing besides just the water and sewer funds, because I know why that's increased.
Well, so it's kind of like you're talking about for the general fund, like your unrestricted cash. The last few years, it's kind of hard to determine because they've been kind of crazy. Let's be honest. You've been getting federal grants that you're probably not gonna get in the coming years. That replacement tax is very high. No one really knows what's gonna happen with that. Your property taxes are pretty consistent. So like some of that stuff, like the last two years is up that you wouldn't normally have. I know that like most with EPA loans and stuff like that, they're very much so looking at like what your water and sewer fees are in order for you to even get grants, and they do all these big studies, and you have to be in line with them to even get them. So I'm not... Did I kinda answer your question?
Yeah.
Kinda not.
It might be so.
It's kinda hard to determine because of like all that new federal money is in there, in play last two years that really is not normally in play.
Well, a lot of the things I heard you say was like, you know, twenty thousand here, forty thousand here. It takes quite a bit of those to get up to three million.
Last year, they were very down. Like gaming was down because gaming was shut down for what, like six months or something? So your bars, you weren't getting that money. So then you also weren't getting that sales tax money from bars being open because they were also shut down for how long. So that all, these two years are not probably great comparison years for stuff like that because it's not really consistent.
Well, I know we've had surpluses for the last so many years in a row. I'm just saying, if there'd be a way that I could get some kind of statement that shows what we've made excluding those two funds prior to December, I'd love to have that because I'm probably gonna lose another vote here, so if I have that, it gives me a little something to say at least then.
But you don't have figured in, the second fee is gonna cost us X amount of dollars. We don't know the price. And we also donate, do not know what the cost is gonna be to double Malick's up. That has to be doubled in size, so you know, you're looking at a million dollars right there.
Well, and obviously, these numbers have, they're on your cash basis, so they have no bearing on that stormwater sewer. Like it's not even in there, just a depreciation number, because like water, sewer, and garbage, they're all on a accrual basis, so like none of those cash transactions are in the financials you're looking at. They're just the depreciation numbers, and something like that is depreciated over thirty to forty years. So even if you're looking at the expense, you're just getting like a small portion of what that real... If you want the cash number, I mean, that's gonna be completely different than what your like GAAP basis number is too. Because some of that infrastructure that you have on there, I mean, that could be like thirty years old, and it's still depreciating. Okay. I can try to get you a better number if you wanna email me.
I'd just like to know if it's still a surplus if you were to exclude those funds.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing I'd like to know, because I know there's a surplus for that because we haven't put in a fifteen million dollar.
Well, if you look at statement four, that is just your governmental funds. So that does not include water, sewer, or sanitation.
Does it have a total surplus at the end then?
Yes.
I have a fund balance, but I don't see a surplus in number.
It's net changes in fund balance would be the total.
So is that at the very end total, one million twenty-nine? So we've still had a one million dollar surplus, just over one million dollars surplus excluding those funds.
But some of that money could have been spent. I think some of that federal money was spent later on, like right after the end of the fiscal year.
That would be including like ARPA funds and stuff like that that we had in there as well. So I see what you're saying. It does throw it off a little bit.
But then some of that money is restricted, so it's hard to like... Only, not all of it is unrestricted. That's also the thing, like seven hundred and eleven thousand one eighty-three is unrestricted money. Everything else is property taxes that have been levied, and that money is supposed to be used for what it was levied for.
Thank you. Surplus is what I have.
So it relies like that seven oh eight.
Surplus. I'll remind everybody, in two months when we have that conversation, surplus.
Yeah, she's an accountant. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
I need a motion and second to approve the audit and financial overview from Hopkins and Associates.
Is it accept or is it approve? Do we accept it or do we approve it? Which one is it? Approve. I'll make a motion to approve the audit and financial overview from Hopkins and Associates CPAs.
Second.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Number eight. Approved bid for tree removal at the water waste plant.
So I know there was a comment made in the public agenda items. I don't know the specifics if all of a sudden that's part of the tree removal is part of their bid process. I'm not trying to throw you under the bus. Do you know anything about that? It's more than likely. Anytime I see tree removal for something, that's usually part of the funding is that they take the trees and do things with it. Yeah. Yeah, I would not want to waste time with trying to change the bid or anything like that with them for any other reason. I just wanna get this thing approved because the sooner we can get that area clear, the sooner we can complete our core samples, and the sooner we can complete our core samples, the sooner we can be, get our permit, and be ready for funding for this big, big project. So if there's any other questions on it. I'll make a motion to approve the bid for tree removal at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is approved quotes for the replacement of traffic light control box.
So...
Go ahead. That's the one out on...
Yeah, I actually have, I have really good news, good news, and then news. So the really good news is the very first one, the one that we're looking to approve here, the one for thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-six. I believe they can start on that tomorrow at the college. They have all the components and everything's in, just need our approval, and they can actually get that. That's the one that's blinking the red right now. That's the very good news. The other bit of good news, the one at Marquette, the one that I said that four of the eight loops are busted. We can get the components in for that to do the work ourselves on the twentieth of October. And the other bit of good news is I misquoted the wrong one. I said the radar one at twenty-six thousand is actually the one called Neo Vision at eighteen thousand five hundred. Here's the thing that's interesting about that. Because it's eighteen thousand five hundred, it's technically below the level that I need to get a council vote, so I could just go ahead and prove that. The reason I say that is, here's the news. The other two lights that we have in the city, everything was installed the same time. They don't have four loops busted, but there is other loops damaged on them. So I don't know how well this Neo Vision is going to work, but my thought process was, after we get the other one installed on the twentieth, we can see how well they work and how well they function. If that's something we wanna do, I can always go ahead and order more of these systems to put in for the other lights that aren't working properly. Just kinda know what it wants to think about that, if they had a thought on it or not.
Let's see how these work out.
I was gonna say, yeah, let's get these two taken care of and see how they operate.
Okay. Any questions on that for anything? And again, the one for the thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-six is looking to be covered by insurance. So to me, that's a no-brainer. I know there was some talk about just pulling the lights out, but I really don't wanna go back in technology, especially if it's covered. So if there is no objections, I'll make a motion to approve the quotes for the replacement traffic light control box.
I do have one quick question. Where are the funds for the eighteen-five coming from, Jason?
My plan was to use ARPA funds for those.
Okay. That's what I thought we talked about. I just wasn't sure.
My plans are when the county comes asking what we've done with our ARPA funds, I'd like to give them the answer that we have put it into all these infrastructure items that have been busted and broken, and that we need to find ways to pay for them.
I'll second it.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Next is the approved request for Oglesby Public School District one twenty-five to close a portion of Bennett Avenue on October thirty-first, twenty-two, and that's for their Halloween parade.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for Oglesby Public School District one twenty-five to close a portion of Bennett Avenue on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Next is the approved solar application and building permit for Darryl Baker. Let's say... Between Sunset and Oakwood Streets.
Yeah, so I looked at the application. I thought the application was quite detailed, had a lot of stuff in there. There's only one concern I have, and I cannot seem to find it, and we can't find it at the clerk's office either. I was under the impression that with our application process, they had to have a line in there that said that they would remove... They put a statement in there where they sign it and say that they'll remove the solar panels if for some reason it becomes unfunctional, or they don't use it anymore, blah, blah, all that stuff like that. In fact, if we pulled the last several applications, it was in there. It's not in this one, but the funny thing is, I can't find it in the application procedures at all. So I don't know, when we rewrote that, if we removed that requirement or what? I can't find it.
We did not redo applications.
Yeah, the only place I could find it was in the land development code under ground-mounted stuff. Actually, I didn't find it. The clerk's office did. Give them credit for that. But the other one, I can't find anywhere, and I know it used to exist because if you look at the last several, like there was a no-block one, there was a Moran one that they put in for, all of those have that statement in there where they signed and said.
In the application, Jason?
In their application.
Or in the net metering agreement you signed with them?
I looked in, I looked in both. I can't, I cannot find it in the application procedures at all, anywhere. But I know it used to be there because the old applications had it written in.
Let me ask you this, Jason. Do they have to be inspected after they're installed?
I believe so. It even says it on here. It has it. It has it on here. Yeah, we have that. That's not one of the, I know what you're thinking about. Those other items are the other thing that we need to send to the planning commission, but no, this one does have it in there. Matter of fact, it's even checked. As I said, yeah, they even have electric permit upgrade, electrical inspection. They even got the fees in here. I mean, everything looks like it's in here, hundred percent. I just can't find that statement. But again, I don't know if we removed it from our application process because I can't find it.
I would approve the application, Jason, but make sure that language is in the net metering agreement you signed with the customer.
Could we approve it to make sure that it's... That it's in there?
So there's...
That statement is in there or hanging something out to it?
So there's another thing they have to give us, but I do know that that is after, to get it on, like for example, there's a one million dollar liability insurance thing that they have to have requirement. However, that isn't to get it approved. That is before they get it up and running. Operational. In my experience, I thought the original application package did have that signed letter and the statement that said that they'll remove it if it ever becomes unfunctional, but I don't remember.
Approve it, subject to them signing that statement?
All right. Anybody got a question? Any problem with that? I'll make a motion to approve the solar application permit for Darryl Baker pending the possible need for having the statement of dismantling in there.
Second.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Ravara?
Got one question before I... That will be inspected?
Yes.
Yes.
It's on, it's in the sheet here. It's signed. They got the check mark next to electrical inspection even on page...
It's like the fourth of the page.
Four of page like sixty.
Okay. Very good. Next is number twelve. Review and take action regarding the liquor license application of Jay Patel. I know we talked about it last time about reviewing and take action whether we're gonna increase it or not. Discussion.
So I thought about this. I had a couple residents come and approach me over the weekend on some stuff here. And so I just did a look today at a couple, just a little bit of research. I went to our Bex today, and in the Bex, there is thirty-six bottles of hard, thirty-six varieties of hard liquor there. There's forty-two varieties of wine and countless numbers of beers and things like that. When it comes to approving a new business that comes in, I know there's a lot of things that we don't usually get a lot of choice over, but when it comes to a liquor license, we do. And so my question is, is it good for, there's four categories I'm curious about. Is it good for residents? Is it good for businesses? Is it good for economic development? And is it a moral and good business that we wanna bring into the city? I don't know how big, I mean, if this is gonna be a Rudy's or a Benny's or something like that, that's a massive amount of liquor options or something like that, to me, that means it's something new that comes in. However, when I look at the three fifty-one store up there, it looks to me about the same size as our Bex. And the other thing is, our Bex is open till eleven o'clock at night, and if I look at their application...
It's eight P M.
It's eight P M. So I'm not seeing where the benefit to the resident is because it's not like they offer a better selection. They don't have a better time for it. That's my other concern. So for residents and businesses, I don't see a benefit. Economic development, I guess it could make a little bit more money into the city, but I don't think it's much. But I have a much, much bigger concern. When I went to the store today to look at stuff, a resident that I wanna thank for bringing it to my attention, because I don't know a lot about it, and I don't know how he knows about it either, but I won't ask a lot of questions, Ryan, but how you know this, I don't know. But I went there and I went to go get something, and I was hoping they could give us a presentation because I went and I purchased something legally here. I purchased this. I'd like to give them a presentation and ask, I'd like them to tell me if they can tell me what this is. That's what it looks like to me, too. I was able to purchase this legally with just money. This is a crack pipe. And I took it, and I was so scared to have this in my own vehicle. I went straight to the police station when I got home, and I asked the questions. So apparently, this is a legal thing to purchase. However, this does not exist in the city of Oglesby. You can't buy this anywhere in Oglesby. So my question is, why would we wanna be opening up a business that's not bringing anything new to the city? But it has a, I don't know if they're gonna plan on putting this in or not. I have no idea. But that's my concern. I don't see there's a benefit to put something like that in our city.
So what you're saying, and I'm understanding, you can legally sell that in your store. But when you put something else in it, then it becomes illegal.
Drug paraphernalia.
I think they're selling it under a different pretense, Dom. I think they're saying it's for a different use, but...
What different use would it be?
So, here's what I was, I'll just...
Recreational smoke. That's what we call it.
Well, here's what I was told, and this is what blew my mind. I was told they're called glass roses. Oh, great, now I'm getting a picture taken with you. So I'm told they're called glass roses, that it's a novelty item, that they put like a little fake flower in it, and that's apparently what this little purple thing is here, little... So, I'm told they're called glass roses, that it's a novelty item, that they put like a little fake flower in it, and that's apparently what this little purple thing is, here, little piece of whatever. And that makes it legal to sell. So, I'm not trying to make a spectacle, but I'm just trying to say, what, what do, you know, I, if that's what they're gonna sell, I don't, I don't see any benefit in bringing that to the city. I've been into, well, I've been into ours here in town, and I asked our, I asked our police chief- No, I have not.
They used to sell bongs there.
Well, so bongs are different, so those, those are things that you could use for, for, well, recreation-
That's what they call-
Well, there's legal recreational smoke.
Well, now there is.
Apparently, this is used for crack and methamphetamines, neither which of those are legal.
Yeah, now it is, back there it wasn't, they, they just said it was used for recreational. Before, any, any, any of those, uh, things were legalized.
So, that's my two cents.
I don't think a crack pipe has any, any benefit to being an Oglesby Illinois. I don't want to support a business like that.
I think you should take action in one way or another, make a motion to deny the request for the liquor license, or-
Or make a motion to, to grant it. What do you want to do? I can't make a motion.
I know you can't.
If I'm voting, I'm not voting just no, I'm voting hell no.
Hey, I need a motion first.
Make a motion, we vote on the liquor-
Deny it.
To deny it.
I'm making a motion that we deny the request for the liquor license, uh, to be in the city of Oglesby from Mr. Patel.
Second.
Colinin?
Is this what he's gonna be selling, other than alcohol? Is this what his intentions are, selling? Is this kind of paraphernalia, or?
Do you want to give him an opportunity to speak, maybe?
Yeah.
He and his attorney, would you like an opportunity to speak?
Uh, if we, if we connect, just one minute, I'm just trying to understand myself.
Receipts in the bag, if you'd like to take a look at it. Yes, sir. And there's tax collected on it, too, which is crazy. Thirty-seven cents tax. That's a great question. Well, I thought about, could you, could you return it for, do you think a crack pipe has ever been returned for a refund, ever in America?
You're gonna be the first one.
They might not want my business walking in there.
Can't have those bird marks on there when you bring them back, though. And, and just in full, uh, full disclosure, the, in, in talking with him, he's not aware of any illicit use that that would be for. It's his belief that that is used for recreational marijuana is what that is used for. If there's any reservations on it, he's certainly happy to not include that in the store. Was the inventory, you know, his plan was primarily liquor is what would be sold there, soda, water. That is a, what he described as a novelty item, um, that isn't the core, goes to the core of his business. It's his position that he would have a better selection than any of the local gas stations, uh, would have. And there are certainly a lot of choices within, in terms of beer, liquor, and wine at his store. As he gets to know the customers and what their tastes are, he tailors, um, his liquor selection to them. If there's a particular type of whiskey that a, a customer likes, he tries to get that, um, in the store to, to count to that. This is a mom and pop shop from LaSalle County, uh, they reside in LaSalle County, they have an established business. Um, I'm not aware of any issues that, that the city of LaSalle has had with them, and they would hope to bring that and, and fill a vacant place in Oglesby. And it is nice to have choice. There's more than, you know, there's various restaurants within the city of Oglesby, various bars, you know, expanding on having, having choice for the residents. Um, is, is the benefit to adding, uh, the second store and filling a vacant building.
I, I do agree with you on the idea of, of being, bringing more choice and stuff to the community. To me, that's one of the, the four pillars that would be great, that, that a place now has more things for more residents to get. So like, like, for example, um, Hy-Vee or Walmart probably has somewhere between five and ten times the amount of selection as Bex does right now. Rudy's probably has ten times or more the selection. So if a business was gonna come in that's gonna offer two, even two or three times more selection than what Bex has, that's fantastic. There's a benefit to the resident, right? Um, when it comes to this object, I don't know if I agree with that sent, statement. I don't know anything about drugs, I really don't. But I had a friend tell me, oh, that store, that's the store that's known for giving up, for, for selling crack pipes. And I said, what? And that's when I went to go take a look at some stuff here. Um, so I have a hard time believing that, I should probably shut my mouth. Oh, that's where you should tell me, should shut my mouth, okay. I don't know, I, I don't know if I believe somebody when they say that they don't believe that's what it's for, so.
I, I can appreciate that, I'm, that's beyond my, um, level, you know, I, I'm not familiar to, to tell you for certain yes or no on that, on that item myself. Uh, but all I can tell you is I'm not aware of a, any issues with the city of LaSalle, uh, with, with the sales, uh, that they have. And I, I don't think that Oglesby, you know, if there, if there's something that is being done that is illegal, certainly. Um, if it's something that restriction that Nordance has or something, then of course they would, they would want to follow that. Their goal is to bring a, a mom and pop shop to Oglesby. We, we can appreciate that the bigger, uh, box stores, like Walmart, and, you know, have a greater capacity. And this is a mom and pop shop with a, a good track record that we're hoping to bring to Oglesby and fill that vacant space.
In all fairness, does, does he know the size of the selection he's looking to bring for the different alcohol variances for a liquor store?
So it'll ultimately depend on the space, that, that they're going to meet the modifications, they're the, um, owner of the, of the current owner, and he are working to, uh, for measurements regarding a, having to put in a cooler and things. So ultimately, it will determine, determine the final floor space. But it's, it will, he, he hopes to bring the same or similar selection to what he has at the, um, at the LaSalle location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, our police told us it's not sold in Oglesby.
Uh, as I said, the bongs, bongs were one of them, not that that was one, they didn't have, uh, legal bill. But they, they claim it was for recreational smoking, so whatever that is.
We have a motion- We have a motion, uh, motion on the, on the floor to-
To deny.
To deny.
Karen first, and the second. Colinin? Karen?
Aye for deny.
Udis?
Aye.
Ramara?
Deny. Next, under Old Business, we've got a, an issue that we have discussed a couple of times. Uh, I did, um, send out an email, or Amy sent out an email to commissioners. The Oakwood Water Issue, uh, will be a topic for discussion on the agenda for the upcoming council meeting. There is precedent on decision on Clark and Mason. The city of Oglesby corrected a water drainage issue by creating a swale and drainage pipe to the north side of Clark Street to flow into a creek and south to Mason. What concerns me is that we have had a resident fill the swale in the back of his house. It has not caused any flooding of basements yet, but it has caused excess of water to flow to the neighbors to the north. This is part of the dilemma on Oakwood. Builders, homeowners filled in the drainage swale as a result, we've had the flooding of basements. And we've talked about this for far too long. As far as I can, if I'm correct, there has been a water drainage issue at the conduits on Oakwood since the retention pond was there, and then channeled to McVetter and Park and onto the creek. That, that water drains all the way from, uh, wire mesh. Um, I think what they're looking at to do is a, uh, uh, to fix this is to run a pipe from, uh, where the water is, is flooding to the street. Uh, not cut a, a swale in there because we don't want to disturb the primary underground. It's twenty-eight years old, and we don't want to disrupt it or cause us a, a bigger problem. Uh, but we have an issue out there, uh, we need to get it resolved for these people. And at this time, if anybody from out there would like to get up and speak, I would give them the opportunity to do so.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Again, I appreciate the time and the courtesy and you guys hearing us out. Uh, the last time that I was up here, the way that we had left it off was there was a, a question about the cost and a question about setting precedent. So, I, I just wanted to address a few things, so this way, uh, you can see that we've worked productively towards a positive solution here that'll work for everybody. Sure, my name's Tony Stefanelli, and I reside at two oh nine Oakwood Avenue. Um, so, the estimated cost of, uh, relocating, uh, the utilities and the swale was like seventeen thousand dollars. And what you had described, Mayor, was eighty-five hundred dollars. Now, that would, um, that would definitely be a, a good fix, it'd be a good start in the right direction. And then at the time when, uh, utilities have to be addressed, we're willing to forego that, and then that's when we can address the swale issue, because we've thought about it, and we don't feel that it's, um, worthwhile to spend money twice on the same thing. So, in that regard, um, you know, we would, we would accept, uh, the eighty-five hundred dollar repair as opposed to going and throwing in the seventeen thousand dollars where we have to disturb utilities and go down that path. Uh, Mayor, I do appreciate you bringing up the whole, uh, you know, where it was done in the past in two thousand and five, between eight oh seven and eight eleven Clark Street, uh, and the easement there, that's where that pipe was put in. Uh, the city did pick up the expense for that, Pohar Construction did that. Um, and that's, that's kind of where we're at with it. So, you know, I can certainly appreciate all the concerns, and I, I think as residents, we've worked diligently to try and bring you a solution where we are keeping in mind the cost, setting a bad precedent. I think what we're talking about here is very minimal, a precedent's already been set, and we're not looking to reinvent the wheel. We're just looking to have the same thing done that was done down the street from us, and I believe that's a, a fair ask. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to address them.
Uh, just one thing, um, I noticed you said you wanted to do the eighty-five, if I remember right, the eighty-five hundred issue, that was gonna solve regular and moderate rain.
Mm-hmm.
But if we ever had a crazy rainstorm like the other one, that's worth the seventeen thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, um, I'm Scott Stuprakis, I am at two seventeen, Oakwood Avenue, two seventeen B. Um, the other part, Mayor, if you remember, we talked about the unusual rain we had really only exacerbated the problem for, what is Shannon's address, you're two thirteen? Two thirteen, because the sewer backed up, and the water coming down from Oakwood Court went between your house, two eleven and two thirteen. And at the bottom of that, there, the, there's no, there's a swale between the houses that at the end of it makes a left turn into two thirteen's basement. I'm asking, could we also put like a six-inch berm there that would continue the swale to the drainpipe? We're talking about maybe twenty to twenty-five feet, that we just build up some dirt there, so if the water doesn't make the left, it keeps going down the swale. Yeah, it just, it, we've never seen it happen, it's happened one time where it just came down and, I don't know, it was because the sewer backed up, but it got to the point where it went down the swale between their houses and went right into his basement.
And Commissioner, the part that you're referring to is where, uh, you had, had your guys put the pump in there?
Yes.
You didn't think that would make the difference?
And it did.
And, and, and that's why I'm saying for us-
And I'm very glad that, that it did, so.
And we appreciate it.
That's good, that's good. I'm always happy to help when it comes to that.
As soon as that water-
Well, hopefully you can help with this, too, because we're counting on it, yeah.
As soon as the water gets below, gets to within two feet of that, it probably solves.
As I said on the phone to you the other day, uh, one of the things I was waiting on, and unfortunately, one of our commissioners isn't here. There's two commissioners that haven't weighed in on anything of this, of any kind of opinion, and I would love to hear what they think.
Okay, I can't help you with that.
I know.
But what I can't, what I can't-
Can't either.
What I can help you with is, you're a commissioner, and you have a vote, and they can say whatever they want, they're their own men. So at the end of the day, we're on the mayor's side here, let's just get it done. I mean, this is gonna help the people in Oglesby, it's gonna help the property values. I mean, the other alternative is, as my wife said, my wonderful wife, when she came up the first time around, well, you know, when you go to sell the place and you have to disclose, well, we got water coming in, that's no good for the person, and that's no good for the city. So I think we have a chance here for minimal money, I mean, we just talked about, if I heard it right earlier in the night, six point two million cash balance, three point two million net profit, guys, we're asking for eighty-five hundred bucks here. Between our five duplexes, we pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year in property tax, so, guys, let's, let's just get it done. You can do it.
I think you make a, you make a fantastic argument, you really do, sir. You do, you do.
That's what I'm here to do, and, and this may not be the last time you see me.
Oh, that's a good, it's a great argument.
Just to be clear, another thing we're hoping will be addressed, whenever the city does do the electrical lines, that when they regrade that, that we regrade that, when they, after putting the lines, let's just grade it so the swale's back there, also fix the-
That's, we had our electric crews go down and, and do some depth potting, so we'd have an idea. Uh, let's just tell you what concerns me, that cable's been in there, uh, twenty-eight, thirty years, uh, it's probably exhausted its life, it all depends on what kind of covering, uh, is on it. I sure as hell don't want to disturb it in any manner and cause us a bigger nightmare. We've got a number of projects that we have to do uh, in order to maintain, uh, reliable service. And it takes, it's gonna take some big dollars.
Right, and then, and that's why I'm asking for that swale between two eleven and two thirteen, is that pipe is gonna exacerbate the amount of water going in the sewer, that if the sewer ever did back up, now we just redirected it two doors down to become a problem. So if we can have that swale, which just keeps it going to the drainage pipe that's there, I think it solves everything.
Yeah, and, and I, I share your sentiment, Mayor, about not wanting to disturb what's there. It's, it's a reasonable argument, and, and it's, it's something that I think when the time comes, and it's something that has to be addressed, that's where we could say, okay, you know, now let's make sure that our grading and everything is right on par where it's supposed to be.
A good portion of that, or, or a part of that would have been addressed this fall, but we weren't able to start the project because we couldn't get the, the wire and the material to do the job.
Certainly.
Uh, we're just like everybody else on the pipeline, uh, it gets delayed a little bit.
And, you know, furthermore, I, I have, um, suggestions that I can share with you after the fact about how we can keep this from happening again, so that somebody else like myself doesn't have to come up here and, um, you know, and, and try to convince everybody that, you know, okay, hey, we need to start doing this. I'd say let's fix the problem before it is a problem, so I'm, I'm willing to do that, you know.
What, what the gentleman's talking about, just so I can make it clear, is, so this is where it all became a problem of, of who was necessarily responsible. And, and the city definitely wasn't responsible, however, we did talk about, it could have been done better. It obviously could have been done better.
There, there's a lot that could have been done better, and, and I think what we both agreed on the last time you and I had this conversation or exchange was that, you know, we can point fingers until the sun's ready to come up, but at the end of the day, we're stuck with this situation, and I do think- And I do think it can be very easily addressed when the person goes to take a building permit to build the next structure. So I, you know, again, I, I appreciate the fact that you're letting us up here to speak our piece and be able to, to talk to you about this. And we hope that you're willing to meet us there with that, you know, with that repair that's gonna resolve a lot of this. And then for the long term, the more expensive repair can be done all at one time, so we don't have to spend the money twice.
I'll be honest with you, Tony. I, I'm not opposed to it. One question I do have, and this, I don't know if anybody here is gonna be able to answer it. Back in two thousand and five, when they did that, when they fixed the drainage issue on Clark, was that at the advice of the city attorney to say, yes, you guys are responsible as a city and you do have to, to make that repair? Where the, the difference here is, if that wasn't, if that was the case this time, what our attorney's telling us is, it's not our responsibility. And not that I'm not, I'm not in favor of fixing. I'm not saying that. I just want, want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples.
That's a good question. And I, and I figured you, somebody would probably ask that question. So let me, let me try and present it as best as possible here. What happens is when somebody's going to get a building permit to build a structure, in the easement there, what's gonna happen is the builder's gonna be responsible. The city's gonna dictate that, okay, hey, you're gonna have to put some sort of drainage in here or something grading wise to alleviate groundwater. Then what happens is, like the storm drains in your guys' neighborhood or in our neighborhood, that becomes the property of the city and the city maintains and upkeeps that. I think what happened, now this predates me, but I think what happened was the can got kicked down the road so that they could see progress with structures going up. That, okay, if two oh nine Oakwood went up before some of the condos and back, well, we'll put it on them because they're building a bigger, a bigger structure. And then what happened was it never got addressed. So that's why I was saying the last time around, it's not a question of the neighbors finger pointing at one another or, or being in disagreement. I think everybody was well-intentioned at the time that, all right, hey, we can, we may not be able to build this duplex if we have them do this, but we know that there's gonna be condos coming down the road. They're gonna be more equipped to, to pay for that. And then somehow it got lost in translation. Is the city legally liable? I don't know because I'm not a lawyer and I don't think that getting lawyers involved is necessarily the right way to approach this or handle this. It becomes like a bad divorce. But I would say that everybody has some responsibility there.
Yeah, I, I think what like Terry's talking about is, so when this incident happened in two thousand and five, did, did whoever make the term and saying, hey, the city made a mistake? Because if that's the thing, if, if I'm told that the city made a mistake and the city has liability on something like that, we're gonna fix it. That, that's not even an issue. The problem is, if they would've came back and that, what I'm curious about is back then, if, if whoever the city attorney was at the time said, hey, yeah, that's not really the city's responsibility. But that council decided, let's fix it anyways. If that's what happened, then yes, then it set precedence.
Either way, it's precedent, in my opinion. I mean, it's, it's been set. And we're at a point where we can, we can have this round robin conversation because now we're just, we're arguing a point. We can have the round robin conversation or we could do something about it and just get it done.
So I said, you made a really great compelling argument. It's great. You're, you're right. For the amount of property taxes that comes in, for what the cost is, it's great. The concern I have is, how do we apply this when there's a four million dollar fix that's out there?
Well, then, I, I think those people need to come up and they need to answer for themselves, just like each commissioner here can answer for themselves. They didn't do the due diligence that we just did. They haven't been beaten on this door for years and years and years. You know, we've went through other commissioners and other mayors and other councils. And we're gonna get this done sooner or later. One way or the other, it's gonna get done. And we'd like for you guys to be the ones that are gonna help with it because for the money we're talking, it can be done and then it's settled and it's over. For the other three thousand seven hundred and fifty residents that you have in town, I don't see them up here asking. And when they do, you have to take it on a case-by-case basis. If the cost is gonna be ten million dollars to fix, well, then certainly you have another, another argument there. For what we're talking about after the audit tonight and the numbers I heard, eight thousand dollars. And for what we pay in property taxes between the five duplexes that it's gonna affect, I don't know that we have much of an argument to argue.
Well, I, and I told you this a month or two ago, that the cost isn't what concerned me. It's, it's the idea that, because I, I have people that are, I, I mean, when we had that massive rainfall, there was an incredible amount of people that were upset.